Workshop? I have it on. Check test? Check test?
Green light on? That one works. Line is?
Hello?
Yours not. Well, yours is.
Number six isn't.
Hello? Hello?
Number seven isn't either.
You're a rock star.
Am I on?
Check test one, two.
They're working.
Should I just start with number five here? Five thirty-two, call the workshop to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Nordby?
Here.
Mayor Mongi?
Here.
Move to adopt the agenda?
Motion?
Anybody? Second motion?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Adopted. Topics: City Council Training. That's gonna be with... There you go.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have about anywhere from half an hour to an hour. Do you want me up there, just so it's easier to do Q and A, or how do you want to do this?
Sounds good.
All right.
Are you comfortable standing that long?
First of all, welcome, everyone. I have to say, I've been doing this for about twenty-five years, and this represents the holistically youngest council I've ever represented. I think you have collectively about four years' worth of experience, so...
Yes.
It's, uh...
Newbies.
Newbies. So, what I would like to do, I've printed mine out. Do you have the training materials, either paper or electronic? So, I still tend to just go through them. I do not plan on reading these verbatim to you. I would like to spend the most time on Open Meeting Law and Data Practice Act. I think what works best, I just did this with the Arts Commission, is if you have questions, let's just do it contemporaneously and go through it. I think it does a better job of kind of keeping things moving, making sure questions get answered, and maybe it leads to other questions. So, the first thing I would point out is that as an elected body, the city council is subject to what's called the open meeting law. And what the open meeting law stands for is this idea that when you get together to do business, the public should be able to watch it in its whole totality. And so, what, if, when you are here, the public is welcome. It does not mean that the public necessarily gets to participate. You do have avenues for that. You will have public forum. Sometimes you will have public hearings on certain matters. But otherwise, what the open meeting law says is they get to be here, observe while you do your business. Areas where open meeting law can become problematic is you guys meet twice a month, and sometimes things come up between then. And during our own work, we will often exchange emails, collaborate, come up with ideas, things of that matter. Email is a trapdoor for the open meeting law. If you guys start emailing each other, formulating ideas, gaining consensus, you are violating the open meeting law. And the idea being, you haven't posted the meeting, the public can't watch it, and it starts to have an appearance, whether it's... Even if there's no ill intent, it has the appearance of making decisions outside the public purview. So, you'll notice when Brian or other staff send you documents, say, hey, here's an update, here's information. Some of the time, there'll be the disclaimer at the bottom, please do not reply all, or at the top. And the idea being, there is nothing wrong with sending you information via email, once it's a one-way ticket out. It's that reply all, hey, I like this, hey, this is a good idea, hey, I'd like to see this developed. What you've done is you've started to engage in a discussion where all five of you are on there. And so, as the open meeting laws developed, it's not just enough that we have to have three people, you know, reply to those emails. At some point, if, when you reply, all, the other four are involved in that discussion. Even if they're silent on it, they are seeing the discussion evolve. So, I've, I have indicated that when, when information goes out via email, my preference is do not reply all. Sometimes I think staff may include you in a blind copy, sort of a dummy proof, so we don't press reply all. The blind copy doesn't allow that. It doesn't prevent you, if you have questions, from reaching out directly to Brian or whoever sent the email with just a reply. And at a staff level, what we have to be disciplined to do is, if Cassidy sends a, hey, I have a question, Brian, we can't start circulating that around to generate discussion on those questions. We have to gather that information and create a cohesive report and send it out to you holistically. So, that's, that's email. That principle applies to text messages or any other form of communication that's out there that I'm unaware of. It does not prevent you from chance social gatherings. If you, if more than two or three of you belong to the same church, or if you're at school, or whatever that happens to be, a parade, a ribbon cutting, you are allowed to be at those events. You have to have, be disciplined not to talk about business, city business, that is. If you do, it's a violation of the open meeting law. Do you have questions on that initially out of the gate? Okay. Is that something folks are familiar with a little bit, or have heard about? Okay. Sometimes there's a, it seems like that's an ineffective way to do it. When you listen to stories at the legislature about closed-door meetings or leadership, you know, party leadership meeting and stuff, keep in mind that the legislature is not subject to the open meeting law. So, it's a completely different set of rules. The open meeting law does apply to your committees. That, that has been established through the law, so there's no, oh, we'll just form a committee and deal with it. They, they too are subject to the open meeting law. And so, your various committees, where you've got your appointments, they do publish those meetings, they take minutes, they adopt the agenda, things of that nature. It's open to the public. So, when you go down on page one, you'll see that there are notice requirements that we have to provide. So, at the beginning of the year, your first meeting, you usually adopt, if it's either at your first meeting or your last meeting of the year, you adopt your meeting schedule for the year 2023. Those, by definition, are then regularly scheduled meetings. So, when you come here, what you can do is adopt an agenda. And if you want to take something off, you can. If you want to add it, you can, if it seems relevant for that evening. You have the flexibility to do that. There are instances where you may feel the need to call a special meeting. Special meeting can be called either by the mayor or two councilmembers alerting Brian. And we put out the notice requirements. It takes three days' notice. The three days' notice is calculated a little differently. If we noticed it today, Tuesday doesn't technically count, but Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, you could meet on Friday for a special meeting. We don't do a lot of special meetings, but in the event we do, you are limited to what is on the agenda. So, we'd have to be very precise and specific in terms of what we list. It can't be, let's just meet and talk about whatever comes up. We have to list what's on that agenda, so the public knows. The idea being, it's not a regularly scheduled event. The public didn't have as much notice to get prepared for it, so you are confined to whatever's on the agenda. And you can't get cued about it and say, street project, other. You have to be specific in terms of what you're gonna talk about. There are, there is a provision for emergency meetings. One of the first things I would point out is, emergency meetings are not an avenue for poor planning. Think things like, if the tornado comes through town and we have serious damage, that's an emergency. If we have to figure out reactions to a pandemic, that's an emergency. So-and-so forgot to fill out the paperwork for their liquor license, and we may have some timing issues, is not an emergency. So, just keep those things in mind when we come to what constitutes an emergency meeting. At the bottom of the page, you'll see there are times when we can go into closed meetings, that the list is there. What I would say, in North St. Paul, the items that we primarily go into closed meeting for are labor negotiations. The good news is, we've just done a lot of contracts. I think we've got at least two or... Yeah, we've done five or six contracts, and we're at least two or so years out before we have to deal with that again. We can go into a closed session to do Brian's review. And if there's any litigation out there involving the city of North St. Paul, we can go into closed session to discuss that. All of those meetings, with the exception of attorney-client, are tape-recorded, and we would provide minutes on those. So, it's important to remember, when we go into closed session on those, we are limited to that topic at hand. You can't use it as an opportunity to close it for one thing and talk about a bunch of other stuff. And those meetings are tape-recorded as a way to try and police that. So, those are closed meetings. You can see at the end, if you violate it, there are potential ramifications. An individual, if it's found to be intentional, can be fined up to $300. You can lose your office. I'm not aware of that happening in Minnesota. If someone has to sue to try and enforce that, they can collect some of their attorney's fees to, to enforce that. So, that is the open meeting law. You will hear things like a serial meeting. That's the, the idea of an email. If Tim sends an email to Cassidy, there's no open meeting law violation. Cassidy then sends it to Jason and says, here's what Tim's thinking, I agree with him, what do you think? That's your open meeting law violation. Even though all three of you weren't involved initially at the discussion, it's the daisy chain of events that leads to an open meeting law violation. Kind of buzzed through that? Okay. No, no pushback? All right. Good. So, it doesn't mean, sometimes I get the, oh, so we can't use email? No. That's just not true. You, you can. What I encourage you to do is, if you have questions, to route everything through Brian and/or Jenny. They can assemble that data, and they create a report or a packet. And it's perfectly acceptable to take the comments or ideas that you have. We'll get into a little bit about, you know, whether you're providing individual direction to folks. But definitely, staff can assemble all of the comments, ideas, and things, and present it to you holistically as a group when the time is right. All right. I'm gonna struggle with this microphone. I'm gonna move on to page three, data practices. This is another area that is new for a lot of folks, or it can be. The idea is that, once you're in public office, all documents created as it relates to city business are presumed public. It doesn't matter if someone sends you an email and says, hey, this is confidential, or, hey, strictly private. The sender or receiver does not get to decide the status of that data. The law does. And what the law says is, it's presumed to be public unless there is an exception to the Data Practice Act. A rather straightforward exception would be if there is personnel data. So, if Brian is working with an employee or something like that, that employee's personnel file is not completely public. There are aspects of it that are public, and the statute defines what aspects those are, but the whole file isn't public. Emails between Brian and yourself are generally gonna be completely public. The one exception for elected officials is, is if you get an email from a constituent or a resident, or just candidly, anyone out in the public, and sends it to you and says, hey, I have a concern. If you read that and then respond, that email is private data. Now, the way the, the law works on that is, is it's private. You can decide to make it public, and they can decide to make it public. But if a data practice request came in that said, I want all, an email between John and constituent A, you could choose to not disclose it and say, such data exists, but it is private data, and we're not disclosing it. However, when you get a, an email from a resident that says, hey, they forgot to plow my street, and you press forward to Brian and say, hey, what's up with this, that email just became public. Because at that point, you have disclosed it to someone on staff, and that, that private status no longer exists. So, as long as the correspondence is between you and a resident or someone, it would be private. But the moment's disclosed to staff, and that doesn't always matter. I don't encourage folks to not forward those emails to staff. They're benign. If it just says, hey, we need some help on this, let's get it moving, doesn't matter. But you should know, you have the option of not all emails between you and staff. Now, if that resident sends you an email and copies Brian, cat's out of the bag. That's a public email, just by the nature of the way it was sent. But if it's just a private conversation between the two of you, that is a private email. Otherwise, everything else is presumed public. We do get our fair share of data practice requests. Sometimes it may feel like the requests are, have ill intent or things of that nature. The law doesn't care. We are not allowed to ask them why they want the data. They're not allowed to ask them what they're gonna use it for. The fact of the matter is, when we get a request, we review the data. We review whether it's public. We review whether we need to redact anything, and then we disclose it. A resident or anyone else, for that matter, has the right to review and inspect data for free. If they make the trip to City Hall to take a look at that data, we cannot charge them. If they want copies, we can charge them. If they want it in electronic format, we can charge them. And we can start to charge for time also. But what the law says is, it's presumed public, and if someone wants to see it, we have to produce it. We have to do so in a timely manner, and we have to allow them to inspect it for free. That's the nature of government collecting data. And sometimes requests can be onerous, as Jenny can attest to. But that's, that's part of what we're here for, is to provide that data to folks who want it. Questions on Data Practice Act?
It's not a... It would be up to you to decide if any of that data would need to be redacted, right?
Yep. I work with Jenny. Jenny has a good understanding of the Data Practice Act, but sometimes there's questions of, hey, what do you think about this? Things of that nature. I think the city has given you city email addresses. I can't encourage you strongly enough to use that and train yourself to do any and all city business on that email address. I have had people who, with their jobs, have certain security clearances or certain protocols in place, and they've used their work email, and they've been very sad to find out that it is not the device you send something from that matters. It's the content of the email. So, if you're using a work email to receive city business, that email, and ultimately, depending where things go, a search of that system may be a product of the Data Practice Act, and that does not leave your employer happy. So, I would encourage you to use your city-issued email and be disciplined enough to only use that for your emails. I, I know folks who have, you know, just either killed an email account, or have discontinued, or have said, hey, please route it back here. I would encourage you to do that. Because keep in mind, if they send it to two different emails, and you're constantly responding to both, both those email accounts are subject to the Data Practice Act, because you're doing business on them. This counts for text messages, all of that. So, if you're texting with someone or texting a staff member, it's subject to the Data Practice Act. And it does not matter if it's on your private phone. It doesn't matter if it's your work phone. It's the fact that city business is being communicated on that device, it is subject to the Data Practice Act. If people actually still sent letters, subject to the Data Practice Act. All right. At the bottom, you can kind of see what the life cycle of a data practice request is. I think in general, to the extent we get them, Jenny usually coordinates them, receives the data, and then we determine what should be released and what shouldn't. Any, any questions on Data Practice Act?
Can you go back to the texting?
Yep.
What does that open up for the, the data act?
A, a text is the same, under the eyes of the law, a text is the same as an email. What I will tell you, from my experience, when producing under the Data Practice Act, is that it is a lot harder to grab and/or print or produce texts.
But just that text chain, not the entire information all contained within that app?
No. So, just, just that text?
Okay.
That conversation. It doesn't some, it's not the, you know, nose under the tent, it doesn't open up everything. And, and what, and, and here, so here would be another example of, you know, if you receive a text that says, hey, when are you gonna be home for dinner? And you're sitting at the council meeting, and maybe you respond or you do something. Well, that's not city business. And so, that text in and of itself won't have to be disclosed. So, just because you use something, doesn't matter. It's the content of it. If it's city-related, that's what will govern it.
Awesome.
Yep.
Just for clarity, your request is only on a specific topic, correct?
Yep. Well, it depends. It can be, it can be on a topic, but they could say, I want all emails that Brian has sent out on February 7th, 2023. So, you, you can hunt around in different ways on that, and, and that's very common for it to happen. You know, we've seen, we've had data practice requests on certain topics, saying, I want all of this going back the last ten years, at which point in time, we have to come up with a schedule in terms of how long that will take, and what form they want it in, things of that nature. And it, it's hard. It's a lot of work, but we're required to produce it. And so, the only requirement under Data Practice Act is that the request has to be clear. So, there are times we will rephrase their question, or say, hey, is this what you meant? Does this satisfy your request? So, we can hone it down a little bit. But otherwise, no. It can be topic, it can be related to a person, it can be related to a date. Any, any, any of those are valid. Any other questions on that? Conflicts of interest? This doesn't come up a lot, but it is important. The legislature has enacted laws saying, now that you've been elected to the council, you can't use it for self-dealing. So, we're not here to spin contracts to our relatives, to ourselves, things of that nature. If you do have a conflict of interest, you need to disclose it, and you need to recuse yourself from the vote. Cities can still move forward with some of these. Not necessarily if it's self-dealing. There's, if, if you are actually entering into a contract with the city, that is potentially possible, to the extent the council thinks that's a good idea. But it would take unanimous vote, an affidavit, things of that nature. I see most cities stay away from it, even if it's potentially permissible. Where I see that come up is in some of the smaller cities, where you'll have a town where, you know, one, someone who owns the auto body shop, or a towing contract, or things of that. The city needs those services, so they use them. There is, there are avenues to do that. But otherwise, most cities basically just have a flat rule that we will not contract with ourselves on those items. If you do, you need to disclose it. You start with, on a conflict of interest analysis, the easy ones are the money. If there's any money being involved, you need to disclose it. In terms of how far does that spread? If someone's in your household, and they are benefiting from a contract with the city, you should be disclosing it. If they are someone you are caring for, or have a financial responsibility for, you should disclose it. So, those are the money items. And that, that's important. This one has ramifications beyond just invalidating the action. I have seen prosecutions on these matters for unauthorized use of public funds, things of that nature. And that's not meant to scare you, it's just meant to make sure we understand the gravity of, you're here to do the people's business, not enrich yourself with the contracts.
Let me just ask a question, because I do phone work for a lot of businesses, and Wold Architects was one we engaged to do a study. Now, I do their phone work. Would that be any...
No.
Because I'm not getting money myself.
Nope. You aren't presumably the, I mean, you work with Wold. Yeah. It's set aside. The example that'll sometimes be used when we have to dig into it, and what I would say is, it's one of the more common questions I get. So, and I saw this on the agenda, here's my relationship with them, what do you think? Pick up the phone before the meeting, so we can work through it. Conflict of interest analysis is, is not necessarily as bright line as we'd like. I will tell you that I take a pretty conservative approach on the conflict of analysis. A lot of attorneys will talk about, well, if there's the appearance, I would stay away from it. Well, that's not a legal conflict, but it is a, a safe way to move about. I do think if we start cutting the line too close, at a minimum, you're gonna impact the public's trust of the process. One of the analysis folks will use is, say, if Walmart's coming to town, and there's the development. Well, if you're an executive at Walmart, and you're on the council, I would tell you to step down from that decision. I don't know exactly how your compensation structure works, but opening a Walmart might impact that. If you are a cashier at a Walmart, I don't think you necessarily have a conflict of interest. Now, that can change, too. I mean, if you're a cashier, and all of a sudden you become a manager, because the vote went right, that's a problem. So, again, in that instance, I tend to advise people, if you have an affiliation with the applicant, I would stand away from it. And again, you can spar on that, but that's, that, that in general is my advice on those things. If you have a spouse that's an applicant, I, again, would encourage you to recuse yourself. If you have a child that's an applicant, and they're minor, and they're living in your house, I would encourage you to recuse yourself.
Can you expand upon that a little bit?
Sure.
Full disclosure, my signature affiliate works at the American Legion.
Yep.
So, would any city business that, like, relates to all bars?
No. I'll give you an example. When Terry was mayor, he owned a liquor store. Now, it wasn't in the city, but he, out of an abundance of caution, anytime liquor licenses came up, he abstained.
Okay.
Do I think the liquor license for the Legion creates a conflict for you? I, I don't. If, you know, if there were an issue where, maybe if we had to do some sort of enforcement on the Legion and impacted it, we may want to have that discussion. But no, the liquor license renewal, I would not view for your situation to be a conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Yep. Questions on that? Okay. On the bottom, and we may cover this in Robert's rules, abstaining. If you have a con, so right now, as we sit here, we have a five-member council. It takes a majority of the five to pass an item, so that means you need three votes. If we have a conflict, if Jason decides, hey, I've got a conflict, I'm abstaining. What that does, under the law, is it condenses the council to a four-member council. Now, it doesn't really have a big impact on a five-member council. I represent some cities that are seven in nature, and that starts to mess with how the votes are counted. But what that means is, you have four, it still takes three out of four to pass that item. Two out of four doesn't pass it. You need a majority, and two out of four isn't. So, keep that in mind. If you abstain, however, and you don't have a conflict, it's still a five-member council. So, only a conflict, and this comes up with abstention. If you just, for some reason, don't feel prepared, aren't comfortable, maybe politics has something to do with it, you just don't want to vote on it, and you abstain. If there is not a conflict, one of the questions I might ask is, do you have a conflict, or are you simply abstaining? And if you have a conflict, the council goes to four. If you don't have a conflict, the council remains at five. And your vote, in essence, isn't counted as a no vote, it's counted as an abstention, but it works as a no vote, because it takes three affirm- but it works as a no vote because it takes three affirmative votes to pass something, and abstention is not an affirmative yes vote. I haven't seen that come up here very often, but it is something to keep track of on that. Okay, conflicts, how we do it on time, not bad. Any other questions on conflicts of interest? Gift law? No, this doesn't mean you can't get gifts anymore, you can still get those. But you are a local official and what the law says is if you have an interested person, the classic example used is if you have a contractor in town who's applying for a land use application or if there are contractors who want certain contracts and, hey, John, I'd like to take you out for lunch, what do you think? First of all, I, I would encourage you to think about taking that meeting when someone is actively soliciting you for business. I don't, a meeting may make sense to get to know the person, but you have to be very, very careful about what else is involved. That lunch, that beer, that let's take a trip together, hey, I've got Vikings tickets, hey, I've got Twins tickets. All of that stuff is off the table, in my opinion. That cannot happen. And I know that as elected members, you're in the community, you're meeting with people, all of those things. But the safest course is to not accept any of those little things that maybe were bought or swapped before. I can't say because someone bought you a beer, you violated the gift law, but it is something, there is, they'll talk about de minimis and certain thresholds and whether they're an interested person or not, but you have to be careful about that. If, you know, you're at the bar and they want to buy a round, I'd encourage you to step away from that. If you're at the restaurant and they want to buy you a meal, I'd encourage you to stay away from that. If you start getting gifts from contractors, things of that, I would encourage you to return them. If you're encouraged to go to the games or a trip or things like that, I'd encourage you to not do it. Now, where I usually get a ton of pushback is from all of my clients who are in sales. Graft and things are just part of the deal. If, if you are in sales, this does not mean as part of your job that you can't continue to do it the way you've been doing it. But I would encourage you to be very diligent about making sure that if you're the one being courted, that's as it relates to your job and not as your position as a city council member. That creates a problem. And again, I would just simply encourage you to be hyper vigilant about that. There's very little forgiveness on the gift law, and that does have consequences. So this doesn't mean for your birthday, friends and family can't get you presents. But beyond that, I would, I would encourage you to stay away from it. Questions on that?
What if you want to give an employee or a department?
Yeah, it's happened. I, I encourage it. I would rather see that come from the council as a whole instead of individual members. I have seen councils on their own, not using public funds, pooling and buying something. I would prefer it that way to make sure there's no sort of reverse quid pro quo. But yeah, I've seen that happen. You know, and I, and I'm not talking about cards or thanks and stuff like that, but an actual gift, something of value. I would rather see it be a council decision and done holistically. Any other questions on that? Okay. Role of the city manager, this is worth spending a little time on. The, you will, in Minnesota, there are various forms of government. You are a Plan B city with a city manager. For those of you new to city government, there are various types of cities. Some cities have a city administrator. An administrator is different than a manager. An administrator does not have the same authority as a manager. So for example, administrators can't hire and fire. They can do discipline, but they don't have ultimate hiring and firing abilities. Brian does. This council, Brian answers to you, but the department heads do not. The department heads answer to Brian. And as a matter of fact, the statute goes so far as to say it is inappropriate for council members, either individually or as a whole, to try and overly steer Brian on personnel matters. It is meant to be hands-off at a council level, no micromanaging. Now, that does not mean if we see something, if all of a sudden there's something we want to change with a department or you're receiving feedback on a department, doesn't mean you can't talk to Brian about that. And certainly as a council, if you want to talk about the future or how something is run in a department, that's appropriate. But the actual, how you implement it and manage that department is completely up to Brian and it's inappropriate for the council to involve themselves on that. Some city councils have what is called a charter. It's a guiding document. You almost refer to it as like your constitution sets the floor of how you do the rest. North St. Paul does not have a charter or a charter commission. Some cities do. So Brian's spending authority and you have a spending policy is up to $20,000. You will sometimes hear other cities talk about the manager. For example, I represent St. Louis Park. Their manager is able to spend up to $175,000. That's a function of the charter. Without that charter, what the statute says is 20 grand. All claims do have to come back to the council for approval, but know that a lot of those have already been spent and Brian has the authority to do that. But there still is a formality that those claims need to come back to you for your approval and consent. So personnel and spending are the big items. I would encourage you, it's an overused metaphor, but I like it. When I think of like an hourglass, you know, if you are up here as executives or, you know, the board of the organization, Brian should be that ring right before it goes down to the employees. There really shouldn't be any information that passes from you to staff. It should go to Brian and let him disseminate that information. If there's a better metaphor, let me know. But I, I like the idea of everything has to be cycled through Brian. He will decide who follows up on it, he will prioritize it, and then he will be the one getting back to you. It, it gets too messy if individually you are contacting department heads and trying to steer work and effort. And it's confusing for the employee because candidly, you speak collectively, not individually. Individually, you really don't have any authority. As a body or up to three votes, you, you do, you have ultimate authority on almost all things. So I would encourage you to work through Brian on those items. There are certainly times when Carrie or maybe Jenny are reaching out to you for certain things. That's not what I'm talking about, but I'm talking about day-to-day decision questions, things of that nature.
As an example, say Brian's department heads are having an issue with Brian and are afraid of retaliation. Can the department heads come to council? Or do we need to call a special meeting? Okay.
Yeah, I believe the personnel policy, and I'd want to double check this, I think the personnel policy says, send your concerns to me.
Okay.
If, if they, if someone reached out to you because they didn't read the personnel policy, I would hope that your next call is to me and then I can help coordinate a meeting or next steps. But that is, that is an example of when, look, if, if the issue is the manager, most people aren't comfortable going to them.
Right.
But the policy does contemplate the next steps on that.
Excellent. Thanks.
Yep. The one, the final thing I will say on that is if you have sort of an entry-level person who is having problems with their boss, we really have to make sure that we honor the hierarchy and so that if they skip their boss or that supervisor or Brian and are coming to you because there's an established relationship or you bump into each other, or hey, by the way, what do you think of this? We need to reroute that stuff back to the establishment, honor the hierarchy on these items. It's, it's just the only way this organization will work. And it just leads to many other problems. One final note on that is you do have six unions, five unions. I believe, how many non-union employees do we have? Three, two of them are sitting here. And so that's not a, a good or a bad statement, it is just a statement. That's, that's the, how it is organized here in North St. Paul. And so one of the things that when I'm watching compliance is I, if we start to negotiate and/or talk to employees outside the context of their representation with that union, you may have an unfair labor practice. And so it's just another layer that we have to be mindful of. And so that's why it's critically important that any and all employment issues do go through Brian. Any other questions on role of city manager? Come on, Tim. Rules, yeah. Rules of order, our last topic. So you are governed by Robert's Rules of Order. I can't think of a worse document to use for city councils. It's too much, it's too big, it has too much in it. We don't necessarily have a good alternative. And candidly, we don't get into procedural issues very often. So you, like most cities, just adopt it and then we figure it out. To do business takes a motion and a second, and then a majority of the quorum. So if you have five of you here to pass something, takes three votes. There are times if three of you show up, you, the meeting can still happen because you have a quorum. And at that point, if for some reason, one doesn't agree with something, there is a, a possibility on certain items that a two-to-one vote could pass something. So you actually have a minority of the whole council, but you do, you have a majority of the quorum present. So a two-to-one vote is possible. I'm not a big fan of that, but it is a possibility. Ordinances under all circumstances require three votes, that's just statutory, it's a majority of the whole council. But otherwise, simple things like resolutions, minutes could conceivably be passed on a two-to-one vote. We do, I, what I will tell you is when we go through, if we get into an issue regarding procedure, my view of the world is there are five of you here and it is, I'm not going to help or facilitate using procedural maneuvering to let, to somehow stymie the majority. If there are three votes to do something, my perspective is that is what should govern, the majority of the council. And that really doesn't happen. You can sometimes see maneuvering with committees or other things at the legislature. That isn't something that happens at city councils. And so if I see where we have a majority who wants to do something, then that's, in my opinion, my calling to procedurally make that so it can happen. And that's not underhanded, it's just the majority should govern on those things. I do strictly speaking under Robert's Rules, if you're a parliamentarian, one of the rules is there should be a motion, a clear and concise motion of what you want to do, a second, and then you debate it. I encourage you as a body of five to not do it that way. I, if you have an item, I would encourage you to talk about it, figure out where you're at on it, decide whether you support it or, look, I just can't get my head around this, I don't support it, here's my questions. And when you think you either have a majority or a consensus, the five of you have said, look, I would support it, but I, I can't support these last two things, what do you think? Yeah, no, that's kind of where I'm at too. I like seeing the motion happen at the end of the discussion. It makes it easier procedurally. If you make a motion and it includes everything and Jason says, you know, look, I support it holistically, but these last two things I can't. The amended motion, the friendly amendment, the secondary motions, it gets complicated and hard. I would rather see you develop, here's where we think we're at before the motion is made. Technically, Robert's Rules would like to see a motion and a second on the floor. Again, I would prefer to see you hash it out and figure out where you're at before we make that motion. Now, nothing prevents anyone. As soon as Brian says, you know, okay, that concludes the report, someone can certainly snap a motion and get a second and you can do it the other way. It just gets messy with amendments and things of that nature. Yep, 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 exactly. And there's usually, everyone's allowed to weigh in and kind of, that's where you start to feel it out, you know? Look, I generally speaking support it or no. Yeah, you can say, look, are there any other questions or are someone ready to make a motion? Yep. That's kind of how I see it teased out. Yep. So you can see again on page seven and eight is the Robert's Rule, the most common things. One of the issues that will come up, not with a lot of frequency, but with some, is sometimes you'll vote on something and for whatever sets of reasons, there's, I don't know, buyer's remorse or, yeah, I don't know, I don't like that. A reconsider, a motion to reconsider is something that people will Google or come back to. So you know, a motion to reconsider has to be made at the same meeting. So if you vote on something tonight, two weeks from now, you'd like to undo it. It's not a motion to reconsider. We can talk about a motion to rescind it or things of that nature. If you have voted to approve a contract and that contract's signed, there is no undoing it at the next meeting. You are contractually bound. If you approve, in my opinion, a zoning application and all of a sudden you get an earful from the constituents, that has been approved. There is no come and take it away at the next meeting. So, you know, when we vote, you should think of it as a rather permanent action. Exceptions. And we're not going to go into zoning and things like that tonight. It is something that I would like to reconnect with you later, perhaps another training. But there are certain things called legislative decisions. If you all of a sudden pass an ordinance and you all, you know, you allow a number of chickens and bees or, you know, whatever the issue is. If all of a sudden you decide that we don't want to do this anymore, it was a bad decision or I just don't support it anymore. In my opinion, we don't procedurally need a mechanism to undo a legislative decision. You control the rulebook. So if a month from now, six weeks from now, you decide that ordinance wasn't a good idea, I do believe in, whether it's zoning or something else, sometimes there's more public hearings required. We can undo those without any, without any, you know, finagling around with Robert's Rules of Order. You just legislatively can decide to take it off the books. All right. Well, you guys were easy on me. If you have questions, follow-up questions, please feel free to either email me directly or send them to Brian and Brian will route them to me and we'll do any follow-up we need to. I can send out a list or sort of a short list. There are certain zoning items that require a supermajority. Amending a comp plan requires four out of five. If you, if we're still doing assessments, ordering the improvement takes four out of five. Actually doing a summary ordinance. So when you pass an ordinance, you'll have pages and pages. What the law says is you can publish a summary to save on publishing costs. You have to, you know, describe what is in there, but, you know, it allows you to save on the expense. That actually takes a supermajority, things like that. But I do have a list of supermajority votes. What we try and do is in your packet, if there's an item that requires four out of five votes, we will try and identify that at the top of the item to say, you know, heads up, this takes four out of five.
I have one final question. If any of us are fundraising for anything.
Yep.
Schools, organizations, et cetera. What do you advise on that if we want to reach out to local?
Yeah, it, so it happens, right? We wear multiple hats. There are state auditor opinions that says cities are not allowed to solicit donations. Now, it doesn't mean that you aren't a member of the PTA or you aren't a member of your church or insert group, right? So what I do encourage you to do is when you show up and start soliciting, that no, we don't mention, hi, I'm council member so-and-so and by the way, I'm helping the school raise money or my church raise money. And there's, there's two parts of that. One is the state auditor opinion that says cities aren't supposed to solicit donations. The second part of that is, is it creates some confusion. It's, are you here as a city council member? Are you here as so-and-so, you know, with the scouts or whoever? And what you don't want to do, and one of the reasons to solicitations is you, the state and the law, and I think this is a good principle, is you don't want to come across as quid pro quo. I'm, I'm here to solicit from you, I noticed that you need a liquor license next month. And, you know, and that can go down the line. So I would, I would encourage you not to send out the letter, council member so-and, seeking money, council member so-and-so. I've seen also some people get into trouble with campaign issues on there because it's viewed as almost a donation to the campaign and it wasn't reported. So I, I would. So I, I would just choose, I would, I would encourage you to leave that aspect of your life out of the solicitation.
Is there a safe way to direct a gift?
In...
Like, four years from now, if I want to run again...
Yep.
...I plan on being self-funded, like I was this time. People are pressing me to contribute to my campaign. Is it safe to say, no, but, you know, if you really want to do something, donate to the food shelf? Can you...
You know, I don't know from a campaign finance, I mean, so first of all, campaign contributions are specifically excluded from the gift law, those are not viewed as...
Okay, so that might have not been the best example, but...
Well, the, so I don't think that would run afoul of the gift law, or a conflict. Where I would be concerned is, whether the state auditor views that as a campaign contribution, even though it didn't go to you. And I don't know the answer to that. Yeah, I don't know the answer to that one. You know, because you do have a hand in where that money is going. Yeah, I don't know how they'd do that. All right, you guys have a full agenda tonight. Thank you.
All right. Any other business that we know of? All right, then I'll move to adjournment, adjournment 620. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, vote, universal, that's right, sorry. A little quick here. Vote, like, votes, what do you want to...
So moved?
Moved. Councilmember Wong, councilmember Cole, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay? Meeting adjourned.